Hello, everybody. We are beginning our candidate forum for Bar Harbor Town Council. We have people trickling in here. We're going to give people just a minute to join, and it'll take us a second to get the Facebook livestream going. So bear with us for just a second, and then we'll do our welcomes and introductions and get this thing off and running. All right, so my name is Ann Luther. I'm here with the League of Women Voters of Maine to welcome you all to this evening's event. Thank you for joining us. Thank you to the candidates for their willingness to participate, for their interest in running for public office and serving if elected. We're going to be doing this Zoom both here in Zoom format as well as on a Facebook livestream. And over here on the Zoom side, the chat will be disabled. People who are on the Zoom, and I see you all joining now, will be able to put questions. If we have time, we'll post questions from the audience, and you should put your questions in the Q&amp;A box on the Zoom options bar. The people on the Facebook side will not have the opportunity to put in questions, but they will be watching, and we will probably have quite a few people watching the Facebook livestream. Jen, is the Facebook Live going at this point?
I'm sorry, Ann, it looks like we hit a little snag, but I would just keep going, and I'll get it up running shortly.
Okay, we'll just keep going. So, Ann Luther, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Mount Desert Islander, welcome to all of you. Let me introduce our moderator tonight as Jill Goldthwait. Jill is a nurse by profession, a former state senator, a former member of the Bar Harbor Town Council, a former columnist for the Mount Desert Islander, and an experienced moderator that we've worked with many times. So we're very pleased to have Jill taking the moderator role tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Jill. Take it away.
Thank you so much. That was a lot of formers. I would like to make note that participating in the moderator's role are two students from MDI High School, C.C. Whitehead and Sage Sartan, and they will be posing question number two to the candidates. We're glad to have you guys with us. Since it's a local election, the candidates are all agreeable to working on a first-name basis. There will be an opening and a closing statement from each candidate with two minutes allowed for those. Then there will be a set of questions that would be asked of each candidate, and again, a two-minute response. We have selected a random order through wonders of a digital program that changes the order on every question. So nobody always goes first. Nobody always follows the same person. Let's see. Then there will be, as Ann said, perhaps some audience questions if time, but it's going to be tight with what we already have. The time limits must be strict, to be fair to all the candidates. There is a visible timer, or I will make a mention of the 30-second limit that's visible on screen to the candidates. So I think we can get started. First of all, I will be reading the bio of the speakers as they come up in the order, and then they will have two minutes to answer the opening question, which is a pretty basic one: Why are you running? The first candidate to respond for the opening is Nina St. Germain. Nina, adding my bio list here. Nina Verfaldi St. Germain is a writer, business owner, dedicated community volunteer, and Bar Harbor-loving mother of three. She runs for council on the beliefs that greater community alignment is possible, and that decisions made today should consider the health and welfare of future generations of Bar Harbor residents. Nina, you've got two minutes. Why are you running?
Okay. Thank you to Ann and the League of Women Voters and the Islander for organizing this event, and Jill, to you for moderating. I'm excited to be here tonight with you all and my fellow candidates to talk about the future of Bar Harbor. A little bit about me, I moved 10 times by the time I was 19 years old, so I never really knew what it meant to be from somewhere until I moved here in with my brother on First South Street 30 years ago. My brother worked at Dawn's, now the Hannaford, and my sister-in-law went to COA. And I put myself through school at UMaine while I worked at Cadillac Mountain Sports and the Burning Tree. I met my husband hiking on Door Mountain on the North Ridge Trail, which is one of my top five favorite trails, and all three of my kids were born here and part of the fantastic Kids' Corner Connors Emerson MDI High School pipeline. So Bar Harbor has really given me everything of meaning in my life. So I hope that I can return the favor by bringing a fresh perspective to the council with my experience in business, communications, volunteer board member. I've pared down most of my volunteering now, which is kind of nice. So I'm only on the Fred and Hattie Lyman Scholarship and Grant Committee, but as an artist also, and not for nothing, as they say, I am a middle child and a mother of three. So I understand competing interests and the need to pay attention to the various aspects of our community, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you very much, Nina. And next up in our random order is Joe Minatolo. Joe Minatolo has lived in Bar Harbor since 1969. In 1978, he and his brother purchased Bar Harbor Bicycle Shop and ran it together for 46 years. Bar Harbor Bicycle has always prided itself by serving the locals first. Over the years, they have employed countless MDI High School and College of the Atlantic students. Joe served on the Warrant Committee through the '90s, the Ferry Terminal Advisory Committee, and now six years on the town council. He was also a board member of Friends of Acadia. He is now seeking a third term on the town council. Joey?
Thank you for hosting this. And I don't know if I have much more to say, but the reason that I'm running is, you know, this is our home. And, you know, it's near and dear to us. It's always given us a really good life here. You know, I'm concerned about the future of Bar Harbor and where we're headed. You know, Bar Harbor has become tougher and tougher to live. The opportunities have been really diminished in a very short period of time for starter home stock, for people operating small businesses. And it's always been a place in my mind that has been for the small entrepreneur and person that really wants to live here. But those are my concerns. I've wanted to give back. I've been on many boards and committees. I've always tried to find a middle ground. There's always two different directions to go, but, you know, always tried to be fair and tried to listen and tried to do what's best for the whole. But I'm seeking a third term because I just feel like there's some unfinished business that I've been working on and would like to continue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Next up is Nathan Young. And Nate's bio is as follows: Nate was born in Bar Harbor and is the owner of Emery's Cottages located on the Sandpoint Road. He became the steward of this gem in 2018 and has the benefit of continuing the tradition of a family-run business. He served the town of Bar Harbor as police chief for 22 years out of a nearly 30-year career with the town. He has a deep understanding of municipal government and the leadership skills necessary to serve our community. Nathan?
Thank you, Jill, and thank you for the Women's League for sponsoring this once again. And it only seems like yesterday that I was doing this presentation. I'm running because I received a tremendous amount of support last year and encouragement to try it again this year. And my concerns are, like have already been voiced, I'm passionate about the town. I watch decisions being made, and I put myself, my lens, I look through it, my lens views myself being in these meetings because I had spent so much time, staff meetings, council meetings, committee meetings, and presentations and whatnot. And my reasoning for running has a lot to do with making Bar Harbor a better place. In my mind, there isn't a better place, and that's why we share it with millions of people, and we're the fortunate ones to get to live here. And I want to make sure that my grandson, who just turned a year old, has that opportunity. And it really comes to roost when you see a child born into, and it also puts some fear into you when you see what obstacles we have to face just to live in this community. And I just want to try to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Good timing. Next up is Gary Friedman. And Gary's bio, and by the way, the bios were written by the candidates themselves. Gary's bio says, "For 30 years, Gary has run a business that helps nonprofits succeed, working with hundreds of organizations across Maine to develop strategic plans, build capacity, and raise over $100 million." His wife, Glennon, founded Bar Harbor Farm, which feeds 150 local families and delivers organic produce to restaurants and food pantries. Gary co-founded a Climate to Thrive and has served on the Bar Harbor Town Council since 2012, working to keep taxes in check, curb cruise ship visitation, address the housing crisis, and reduce energy costs through solarization, conservation, and supporting the formation of the town's Climate Emergency Task Force. Gary?
Bar Harbor is on the cusp of something big. You who are watching this forum, and especially two of tonight's candidates, will have the opportunity to shape our town's future. Will we create affordable housing so that those who work here can afford to live here? I've worked to add a housing planner to town staff, to spearhead housing developments in Town Hill and Salisbury Cove. Will we reach a political compromise solution to the cruise ship controversy that acknowledges that a majority of voters want significant reductions in cruise visitation but are tired of endless, expensive litigation from both sides? Three years ago, I made the motion to pull town residents on cruise ships, and I voted against the Memoranda of Agreements with cruise lines because they would not substantially reduce visitation. Will we curb the growth of tourism and focus on sustainability and quality of life? It's time to say enough is enough. Will we find alternative ways of paying for infrastructure improvements and keep taxes from double-digit increases? I'm committed to passing a local options tax in the state legislature. And will we continue to lower our town's carbon emissions with federal grants for energy efficiency and solar projects? That's my stock in trade. For the last 12 years, I've been taking leadership on these issues before the town council. I've been listening to you, the residents of Bar Harbor, and advocating for your interests. I'm asking for your vote to give me another term to continue working with you on these issues.
Thank you, Gary. And next, we have Charles Sidman. Charles's bio says, "My return to local civic activity began with formulating, getting passed, and defending the recent Bar Harbor cruise ship ordinance. For 40-plus years, I have raised my children and grandchildren in the local school system, worked at Jackson Lab, the MDI Biological Laboratory, and COA, supported my wife in her art gallery, served on the Warrant Committee, and now, as a global early-stage impact investor, am experienced in business, finance, law, and ethics. I am running to provide voters with a chance to express whether they are satisfied with current trends in our town and a pragmatic, realistic, and determined alternative if not." Charles?
Thank you, Jill. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate the organizers here, and I've got to say, it's a really good group of candidates. I'm impressed. I could vote for all of them and serve with any of them. So my background, as Jill just read, I think I've been involved with, for more than 40 years of my adult life, more than 60 years of my total life, with many of the important parts of Bar Harbor. And while I've traveled all over the world, and I still do it, Bar Harbor is my special place. It's my favorite place, place I care the most about. And so giving back is part of the way I was raised. I've worked at the labs and the college. I've participated in local government, a number of referendums, Warrant Committee. You've seen my work as a columnist. My kids have gone to school, my grandkids have gone to school. I really care about the place and feel quite connected to it. And I'm a business owner, have been for a long time, from local to larger scales. Why am I running? I'm running because really good, smart, dedicated people have always served the town, but it's my feeling that even this group has made some poor decisions. And I would like to offer some alternatives. Some may view me as a little bit irascible or, you know, extreme, but I think sometimes we have to face the facts. If we have an illness, we have to deal with it. So the three big, thank you. The three big issues that concern me now, there's the cruise ship issue, which to me is part of respect for law and the voice of the citizens. There's the whole budget question that we've been outrunning our pocketbook for years and years, and that affects everything in our town. And finally, there's the preservation of our environment. There's a number of pressures there, and I'm concerned that we're going to act unwisely and throw the baby out with the bathwater. So I offer an alternative. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And the next candidate is Michael Boland. And here's Michael's bio. Michael grew up in Philadelphia and has lived in Bar Harbor for the last 35 years. While living in Bar Harbor, he realized that COA was a great fit for him, so he transferred in and graduated. He and his family live in downtown Bar Harbor. Both of his daughters attended Connors Emerson. He has co-owned and operated multiple Bar Harbor businesses over the years, including Rupununi, Havana, Chocolate, and The Chart Room. He served on various committees and boards, including on the Chamber Board as president, and currently serves on the College of the Atlantic Board of Trustees and the Board of the Maine Conservation Voters. Michael?
Thanks, Jill. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, the League of Women Voters and all the candidates. A quick bit more about myself. Clearly, I'm a businessman, have been my whole life. But also, as evidenced by the mention of the boards, I've served on various boards, including the Abbey, which I didn't mention in the bio, the Beatrice Farron Society, a lot of boards. I like them. I like working with a group. This is why I'm running. I like complex problems, and certainly, we've got a lot of them. Any town does. And I like trying to solve them together. Some of them, you're not ever going to have everybody happy, but if you really work hard at it, I've found over the years, in my businesses and then also in the boards that I've served on, the organizations, that you can end up with a result that is pretty satisfying to the majority of people. Like Nina has mentioned in my bio, my kids came up through Bar Harbor. We live downtown. We love it. We value it highly. I have always given back, and that's why I'm running. I'm ready to lend a hand. I'm not running because I think that things are so awful or about to be awful. I think that we've got a great council right now, generally. And I'd like to be a part of it and like to be a part of the decision-making. So that's it.
Thank you, Michael. All right, we're ready for question one. I'll just let you know that a couple of our panelists can't see the timer, so that's why I speak it out loud to a few of them, but not to all of them, so you all know. All right, we're ready for question one. First up on the random choosing is Gary Friedman. And question one is, what kind of housing does the town need? Where should additional housing go? And what should the town do to advance those goals? Gary, we can't hear you. We don't have audio.
Oh, excuse me. We need every type of housing. We need more rental housing that's affordable. We need more opportunities for homeownership. And we need high-end housing because there's a lot of demand for it, and those people are buying up houses that could be used for workers. I think that the housing is ideally located in areas served by town water and sewer. If that's where it makes the most sense to have high density. But we also have opportunities to build housing on a couple of locations. The former Acadia National Park property in Town Hill is about 50 acres. That could house many year-round and seasonal residents that work both in the park and in our local communities. And YWCA just purchased a large parcel out in Salisbury Cove, and they're going to need some zoning changes for that. I also think that it's important that we provide opportunities for workers to live without employers buying up houses. That's been a huge impact on many of our neighborhoods because those houses go dark in the winter. So the kind of housing that Witham family built on the corner of Eden and Mount Desert recently, that, we should see more of that. We should also see the accessory dwelling units, you know, that are now being proposed to be possible with the land use ordinance amendments that are going to be on the ballot. Those are important. And I think finally, we should be looking to pass a local option sales tax that could be used to support this. And we should be looking at partnerships with other organizations like the Park Island Housing Trust and developers that specialize in building affordable housing.
Thank you, Gary. Next up is Nathan. Question is, what kind of housing does the town need? Where should additional housing go? And what should the town do to advance those goals?
This is a lifelong issue for me, considering the fact, when I grew up, I was born here in Bar Harbor, grew up in Seal Harbor, and was told at that time, you're not going to be able to afford to live here. So this is not a new problem. It's much more aspirated as we speak. Workforce housing and the models that have just already been described, such as what the Withams built at Kibo and Mount Desert Street, along with the dormitory that they built on their own property up at the Atlantic Ocean Side. Those are models that work very well. I've seen the workforce housing that doesn't. It used to be, Rodeck Street used to be one-stop shopping for the PD because of all the ruckuses and whatnot, but we've got well-placed ordinances that deal with issues like that. Affordable housing is a huge obstacle for us to overcome, considering where we live. We're the third highest-valued county in the state, and that, just York being second, Penobscot County, I mean, excuse me, Cumberland County being first, that sets the bar pretty high on affordability. And the obstacles, without, absent the great work that our nonprofits do towards housing, it just cannot be done without some sort of subsidy. And that's a huge challenge, and it's something that we need to try to overcome. The lack of trades, the availability to get a trade, just for what we have existing is almost impossible, almost impossible for just operating a regular household without any additional buildings going up. Any growth area should be considered in areas that serve, town water and sewer is very important. If we're going to do lot density, anything other than that, that's a big obstacle for me when it comes to septic and the well-placed and meaningful approach that we used for minimum lot size in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Charles Sidman. The question is, what kind of housing does the town need? Where should it go? And what should the town do to advance the goals?
All right. Well, there are three questions there, Jill. I'll try to answer them specifically, and I'm going to try not to take the approach that we need everything everywhere. You know, Santa Claus, it's not the season for Santa Claus. So what kind of housing does the town need? I don't think there's a huge demand for more expensive, large, opulent housing. That consumer community, I think, has access and means and is already reasonably served. It's also not the largest group. What we need is more affordable housing that workers or young families can access and live in. So that's the first answer. Second, where should the additional housing go? I think it's very important that it go on town water and sewer, as we've stated, or that we are very careful that we don't increase the already multiplying environmental problems. We don't want to work towards a solution for one problem, housing, and mess up our own nest by ruining our environment. Lastly, what should the town do to advance the goals? Well, I think we can do some zoning changes, as long as we're very careful and we don't unleash open Pandora's box. We should avoid arbitrary, I remember when there was a small hotel at Cromwell Harbor, and it was proposed to be opened up to be small condominiums. And we said it couldn't be done because somehow, people shouldn't be allowed to live in small spaces. That's the kind of arbitrariness that I think we should avoid. The town could use its financial borrowing power to help finance some common facilities. But I don't believe the town should directly subsidize this admitted need at the expense of other present taxpayers. We can use our financial muscle. We have access to good interest rates. We should not have arbitrary zoning and rules, but it's a natural process. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Boland, what kind of housing does the town need? Where should it go? And what should the town do to advance the goals?
As Charlie said, three questions there. The first, you know, I mean, this is exactly the kind of complex problem that I was saying that I enjoy solving, but not this one so much. It's really difficult, right? I mean, the free market is the free market. Not to sound like Adam Smith too much, but it's going to decide what kind of housing ends up here. And that's been part of the problem, of course. It does need some deregulation as far as the type of zoning we have. Certainly, I agree with what Gary said. We need all kinds of housing. We need apartments downtown. We need some single-family homes. We need some IHT-style blustered development. What I don't agree with what Gary said is that the problem is employer-owned housing. You know, whenever you make a complex situation like this, and you try and boil down it to a simple thing like, well, it's weekly rentals, or it's employer housing. I own a bunch of employer houses. They're not dark. They're year-round. We've got people living in those houses. The rest of the street is dark, right? But I'm not going to sit here and say that the problem is Airbnb either, or weekly rentals. Because again, it's great to be able to try and simplify it and say, well, this is the problem. That's not how you get a solution done. Where is it going to go? It's going to go wherever we can. Again, we've already changed some regulations over the last couple of years, including ELQ, the employer living quarters, and including allowing for more development downtown. Why not do infill? Why not get some extra apartments? There used to be a time that Joey and many people will remember, where you needed a set number of parking space, and you needed to pay a sewage assessment fee, and you needed to do this. All I want to do is put in an apartment of Bombay Business. Where can it go? What was the third part?
What?
Yeah, that's it. I'm in yellow. I hope that answered most of it.
All right. Thanks, Michael. Next is Nina.
All right.
I'm sorry. I'll repeat the question. What kind of housing does the town need? Where should it go? And what should the town do to advance the goals?
Okay. I like this question. Michael, I appreciate your perspective. The latest report that I read from The Maine Economist, the RKG consultant, shows that Bar Harbor is now seen as less attractive for new residents because it's getting too expensive due to high prices and lack of inventory and taxes. And because of that, it looks like fewer people are going to be living here, and more people are going to be living in Ellsworth. They're calling Ellsworth a net absorber. So if we don't change our course, the young people we want to populate our new school and work our jobs will not have a realistic opportunity to do that like I have. We need to think differently about housing by correcting our land use ordinance to favor residential development instead of favoring transient accommodations. Many people come here for work. They can't afford to buy homes. Unlike before, buying homes isn't as big a priority for the younger generation. So again, all signs point to rentals. To help make things better, I think we should allow for more development in areas that already have basic services like water and sewer. Seems like there's a lot of agreement here. I wonder how practical it is to focus our density increases in rural areas like Town Hill instead of closer to municipal areas. I think concentrating it in the downtown and where there are larger population centers serviced by water and sewer. We can continue to work toward increasing the opportunity for additional housing by allowing smaller lots, reducing the space needed per family, letting buildings be taller. This approach would let us add more housing where it's already busy while keeping our rural areas untouched. And of course, we need to accept that as a community, our new neighbors will be in somebody's backyard. So if housing is truly a priority, we need to create a referendum. Do we want multifamily housing in areas where there are services? And that would be the basis needed to support land use changes in these areas for our younger, year-round people and families.
Thank you, Nina. Joe, you're next on this question. What kind of housing does the town need? Where should additional housing go? And what should the town do to advance the goals? Where should additional housing go? And what should the town do to advance the goals?
I I I'm in agreement with everybody so far. It's all types of housing. There's no question about that. When you go across that bridge in the morning or in the afternoon, I mean, that's a big sign right there. Um, we need affordable housing, and what I mean by that is affordable housing to our median income, at least. Um, you know, we don't, the, the housing that we have right now, even apartments are out of reach for nurses. For teachers, for pretty much any, uh, you know, reasonable jobs that are offered in our community. And I think that, you know, we have to look at our zoning. We have to look at setbacks and building requirements. We have to incentivize, uh, you know, all types of housing. I mean, it, you incentivize what you want. You disincentivize what you don't want. So, you know, at this point, with our current zoning, our current setbacks, you know. Outside of town, when you have a two-acre minimum with 200 feet of road frontage requirements. I mean, that makes things pretty tough to develop or subdivide. Um, I think also there could be a market for um making the permitting process easier. Uh, as far as like when it's simpler housing, like a garage apartment, you know, there might be an opportunity there when it's like, hey. I've got this garage. It's got a second floor. I'd like to put something up there. Uh, I could help a student out. I could do. You know, help a worker out, uh, help a li- get a little bit of income. And uh, but we need to incentivize people to do these types of things and not make, you know, it hard for them to do these types of things, so.
Okay, thanks, Joe. And I will now turn the moderating over to Sage and Cece for question two.
Um, first for question two is Michael, and the question is, what is the right balance between resident quality of life and local economic opportunity? How close to balance are we? And how can we improve?
It's a tough one. Uh, it first assumes that. My balance is the same as yours, right? I mean, everybody's balance is going to be a little different. If we're talking about the fact that there's too many people, cruise ships come in on the sidewalks. I generally, there's an agreement there, but some people think that that's the best time to be in Bar Harbor. Certainly, some of the merchants and and some of the cafes. So. The very premise of what's the right balance to begin with is, is really difficult. Um, are we over-touristed, uh, uh, as Gary said? Um, I don't know. There's a lot of places in the world that are, of course. And it's almost inarguable, although there's probably people there that would argue that they're not over-tourist in Venice, Barcelona, places like that, Key West. Um, I think that the best approach is what we've been doing, sometimes successfully, sometimes contentiously. Is trying to balance it out and trying to measure it out and really get to the, the, the idea of what is the balance. I don't know what it is. I live in town. I love the summer. I love July and August. I love when it's crowded. Does it drive me crazy to take 28 minutes to drive from Havana down to the post office? Absolutely. Um, but I chalk it up to it being July, and it's always been that way, and that's what it is. And maybe I should ride my bike more. Um, so I I I think it's a really difficult question, and I think it's something that we as a community are going to be wrestling with. I'm sorry, I'm not answering it more fully um for the next fifty years. Does it, am I suggesting that we don't need to do anything about it? No, I think we need to be uh aggressive um about coming up with answers. Coming up with what is the right balance um for the majority of people, and then making the, the plans that will, that will, that will get us to that balance.
Thank you. Uh, Cece? Um, Charles, the question is, what is the right balance between resident quality of life and local economic opportunity? How close to balance are we? And how can we improve?
Okay, uh, let me say that this is one of my favorite questions in the list, so I appreciate having the chance to answer it. And I'm going to try to take a different tack than what Michael took. I mean, I understand what he's saying. But another answer, my answer is that the right balance between quality of life and local economic opportunity. Is we want to maximize the quality of life for the residents, and that requires a minimum acceptable. Level of local economic opportunity. What we don't want to do is the opposite, which is commit ourselves to maximizing. Economic opportunity with a minimal acceptable. Resident quality of life. So there we have it. I believe we have to listen to the majority of the residents. And economy serves quality and enjoyment of life, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Sage?
Um, next up is Nina, and the question is, again, what is the right balance between resident quality of life and local economic opportunity? How close to balance are we? And how can we improve?
All right, thank you, Sage. The, the right balance, this is such a funny word for me. Um, even the best dancers, I've done a lot of dancing in my life, or yogis, can only maintain perfect balance for like. A specific period of time. The word in and of itself means something temporary, right? And I think part of our problem in Bar Harbor is that we're constantly pitting quality of life against businesses. So that if one is uncomfortable, it's always the fault of the other. And perhaps this fundamental basis of our discontent should be questioned. I think it's safe to say that businesses want predictability and residents want to be able to move comfortably in our town. So how can we tie the success of business to the pride and comfort of our residents? You see, so here I've aligned our collective needs by asking it that way. So if we think of balance as something that can be disturbed, then shoring up the foundation, the center is where we should focus. We can choose to reorganize the closet to accommodate our residents and our economy. We can educate travelers to leave their cars at their accommodations, encourage island explorer buses and hotel shuttles. Biking and walking opportunities. We can work with the business community to brand our island and teach our visitor, our visitors just how special it is. And I think this is really our best path to alignment. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Back to Cece. Uh, Joseph, the question is, what is the right balance between resident quality of life and at, and local economic opportunity? How close to balance are we? And how can we improve?
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, both of these issues are very important. Um, quality of life um is. A more of a priority than the economic side of things in our town. I think the economy in this town, I've, we've been here for so long. I mean, it's, it's always been really solid in the town of Bar Harbor. I think that traffic mitigation is a real important part of this. I think that's what people are really feeling. I think right now that um we need more bikeways, more pedestrian ways. We need more public transportation. Um, I think, you know, putting the toothpaste back in the tube is not a reality. As far as uh cutting tourism per se, but I think managing tourism is something that's really important. Um, the uh, when, when people don't feel like this is their town anymore, which I have heard numerous times. Like we've sold everything and I, I don't have a chance to get to the waterfront or enjoy the shore path or enjoy our parks. I mean, uh, that's really sad to me. And I, I know that there's people that enjoy. Uh, the intensity when it's full on, but it's one of those things that there's got to be a balance. There's got to be a way of alleviating some of the pressure. This is like a balloon here and. And uh, it just feels like the automobile and the movement of people um are the biggest obstacles. And if we can get that under control, maybe that would lower the pressure, so.
Thank you, Sage. Um, Nathan, what is the right balance between resident quality of life and local economic opportunity? How close to balance are we? And how can we improve?
Well, I, I would suggest that we're not balanced as we speak right now. I, I, the. I guess we have to take the example of the National Park has a management plan for a reason. And uh, and they have a reservation system to get up on Cadillac. All these changes are due to the fact that there's, there's a recognition. That we can't overburden and overcrowd our ecosystem, uh, our, our geographical layout. We have a small area when it really comes down to it. And the impact, obviously, when we talk about residents, our, we're, we're, we're talking in terms, we're business owners. We're all residents too, and we predominantly, we all care deeply about our town. And when you hear feedback and pushback from other residents, non-business related, you have to listen to what they're saying. Because we can't disenfranchise those that are impacted by the larger crowds. And we have to stay dialed into our visitors who also has a negative impact if we have too much visitation. And uh, again, we can't satisfy the extremes, but I certainly believe we can strike a balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Cece? Um, Gary, what is the right balance between resident quality of life and local economic opportunity? How close to balance are we? And how can we improve?
Thanks. You know, I think that we've either exceeded the carrying capacity of M D I and particularly Bar Harbor. Or, or at least we're very close to exceeding that. And I say that because I bike the Park Road a lot. And uh, there are many days now when there are cars parked in the right-hand lane, all the way from the fee station to Otter Cliffs. And there's lines of people literally like ants, one after another, going up the beehive. And you can't find a place to park at any of the trailheads on the Park Loop Road or um, on, you know, in other places around the island. I think that's a problem. And I think it's because we have um not done anything to rein in the hospitality industry. I worked really hard to have a limit on uh, non-hosted uh, short-term vacation rentals. And I'm glad we did that because that was eating up uh, local housing and bringing more visitors than the town could accommodate. I think maybe it's time to consider um, a, a cap to the number of new um, uh. Hospitality units, um, you know, transit accommodations, hotels that can be built. Because those hotels just bring more people, more crowding, and, and every time you build a new hotel, it requires lots of workers. And if, if those workers are not all housed on site, there's going to be pressure in neighborhoods for those employers to buy up housing. Which makes it more difficult for local people to buy housing and, and to live in those neighborhoods. So um, I think it's time that, that we uh, we say enough is enough and look at, at restoring. A, a balance of, of quality of life between the, the people that want to live here year-round and the tourist industry, which just seems to. Continually want more, more, more.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you to all the candidates and for this opportunity. Back to Jill for question three.
Thanks a lot. Cece Whitehead and uh Sage Sartan from M D I High School. Thanks so much for helping us out tonight. Question number three, and Joe Minutolo is up first. And the question is, an increase of roughly fifteen percent in the town budget is anticipated this year. Resulting in a tax increase. Do you support the budget as presented? If not, please specify items you would reduce or eliminate, and say how much that would lower the proposed increase.
You know, um, this is a tough one. Uh, the lion's share of this tax increase is due to uh, the school bond that's coming up. And the people did vote for the school bond. Uh, and it's one of those things that. I was really nervous. I, I actually didn't support the bond uh, at this point. Uh, because I, I saw this coming, this tax increase. And I really don't think that people really understood. Uh, you know, what the tax ramifications were going to be, whether that's a failure on the council's part. But, you know, it was spelled out in numerous meetings on what this was going to be. When we do look at the budget and look at the warrant, uh, you know, with the warrant committee, and you, you have people on these committees. That constantly are trimming little bits out of the taxes and, and yeah, there's, there's places where we could cut a little bit back. But it's really how the, the budget is funded. And um, I just firmly believe that I, I, I think the employees of our town are doing what the council wants. And they are fiscally responsible. Um, as far as trimming little things, you know, you trim a, a, a half a point, quarter of a point, a point. I've been on the warrant committee all through the nineties. I was on it before I was a counselor. And it's, it's the same thing. We, we scrutinize over this budget and we try to trim things. But it really doesn't have any real bearing on how much the budget gets cut back. Thankfully, this year, our town manager really took the reins, and he did do a really nice job on, on uh, cutting things back. But, you know, this fifteen percent is really attributed to what the voters wanted and, and uh. That's kind of where it stands.
Thank you, Joey. Uh, next is Michael Bolland. An increase of roughly fifteen percent in the town budget resulting in a tax increase. Do you support the budget as presented? If not, please specify items you would reduce or eliminate, and how much that would lower the increase.
Thanks, Jill. Um, I, I support it as presented only because I wasn't involved in it. And I've got to give kudos to the people that worked hard to, to get it to where it's at, right? To Joey and Gary and everybody else in the warrant committee. I, I, I don't, I, I'm not, I don't like it, but I do support it as presented again because um. Uh, I wasn't part of the process. Would it have been different if I was? I, I, I don't know. How, how much would I have argued against uh, further cuts or um? Or new revenue sources? It's hard at that point when you're presenting the budget to come up with new revenue sources, a lot easier at that stage to just try and cut. What new revenue sources would I look for in the future? Because it, it does look as Joe's saying. You know, this isn't it, this isn't going to be a one-off. This is going to be something that we're dealing with over the next several years because of the school bond and because of other increasing costs. Certainly, some type of revenue from, from the hospitality industry. And whether that be a lodging tax, which as we all know, has failed over the years. I'm in favor, ironically, even though I'm in the food side of it, if, if we're going to tax it being both lodging and, and dining. As long as we set up some guardrails for that tax, right? There's nothing that uh, that a council or a legislature likes doing more than just going back to an easy well. And raising a tax. Once you, once you get a local option tax, if you can finally get one passed, it's easy to just go back and say, let's go to one and a half instead of one or two, instead of one. Um, so I'd want some guardrails there. I, I agree with Joey to, everybody's working as hard as they can. How many cuts can we come up with? There's got to be some, but it's, it's, it's hard work. I see I'm in the yellow. Hopefully, that answered some of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Next is Nathan. Uh, the fifteen percent proposed increase in the town budget. Do you support the budget as presented? If not, what would you cut and how much would that lower the increases?
I do not support the budget as presented. Uh, fifteen percent, you know, two years in a row, double-digit increases. And I suspect we're going to be facing something like that next year. And to suggest that it's the school, I'm, I'm not, I, the school is a trigger that created this year's larger percent. However, prior to the last year, the school had been trending on a ten-year, over ten years. They were around thirty-six, thirty-seven percent over a ten-year period, while the municipal side of the budget went up over seventy-one percent. And I, 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 I do know, I'm going to speak to this because it's something that I do know. I did ask for the fact that we should do a, a review of all cost centers to determine what's driving these costs up. And whether or not we can sustain that. My twenty-two years as police chief has, has a shining example or, or glaring example to me. Is we've combined our police departments with Mount, with the town of Mount Desert. In our operating budget, it represents two-point-nine million dollars when our neighbors to the north, Ellsworth. With a geographical overlay that eclipses both of our jurisdictions combined with a budget of one million eight-hundred-and-six thousand dollars. Our police department budget is one million seven-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars operating. And you have another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the C I P. These, uh, you've gone from four to eight police cruisers. You have three take-home vehicles.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, I'm just simply saying is we can do a better job when we enter into agreements with some, somebody. Have a willingness to take a good, hard look at what those numbers are and be willing to step away from something instead of putting us on. From ongoing, reoccurring costs. I think we can do better. I know we can do better because I've seen it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. And next is Charles Sidman, and the question is. A rough increase of fifteen percent in the town budget anticipated. Do you support that? And if not, what items would you reduce or eliminate? And how much would that lower the proposed budget?
Hey, thank you, Jill. The first part of the question, do I support it? I do not. Um, I've spent some serious effort looking at our town budget over the last twenty years. And for most of those years, our town budget has grown more than inflation. And our population has not grown at all. So we've been, we've been accepting a drip here or cut there and. It's becoming a more and more expensive town to live in, which we've discussed earlier. In the last couple of years, because of a couple of big deferred items, schools, infrastructure, et cetera. We've incurred huge bonds that we're beginning to have to pay for. And that is causing double-digit tax increases for the last several years and probably the next several. And we're all grownups here. We all run households or businesses. We don't spend more than we have if we want a new vehicle or to go on a big vacation or to re-roof the house. We can do that within our means, but if we don't have unlimited income or someone else to pocket pocket to raid. We cut back somewhere else. Most business owners and most businesses have had the experience of in good times, they grow and they hire more people. In bad times. They shrink and they reduce some positions. So. If we did not vote for the budget cap override this June, we would cut our increase by about ten percent. Thank you. If we want to keep our town budget and our town taxes in line with inflation. Our real costs, we have to cut about fifteen percent, specifically four-point-eight million dollars. And we did make the decision, the choice to build a school and we had to rebuild our infrastructure. I think that means we have to reduce other expenditures. And if you want to go to a bank, Jill, and borrow money, they won't give it to you if you can't pay.
Time's up.
Same for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, Gary is next, and the question is about the town budget proposed fifteen percent increase. Do you support that? If not, what would you reduce or eliminate? And how much would that save?
Hey, I I want to say that I've been getting messages that my internet's unstable, so please let me know if I'm cutting out. I I might have to turn off my videos.
Alright, so far so good, Gary.
Okay, well, um, so I've been working really hard on town budgets for twelve years and. Um, we, the, as a council, spend many, many hours going through that budget. The municipal side of the budget accounts for less than half of the total. We, a a large part of the drivers of the budget are the high school, the elementary school, the county. And um and then uh large capital improvement projects. So um in, and with those large capital improvement projects with a school. And then remember we passed that forty-million-dollar water sewer stormwater bond the year before? Like, those are the big drivers of this. The um, the municipal budget is uh, you have to look at the annual cost of living. Um, because most of our expenses are for employees, so so the 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 cost of living adjustments are a big part of that. And I think that um that, you know, the council only has control over the um, over the the municipal budget. But when we present it to the voters, it looks like, you know, it's all the council's responsibility. So that's not an excuse, but. I think that we're um, we're doing the best we can. And you know, a lot of what drives like our, our police and our fire um. Increases is, is the growth in visitation. You know, we we spend a lot of money with the police managing traffic and buses and tourists down at the pier. Um, you know, so even if the population's stable, our visitation has grown. And that's why we have a police force that's good for a population of like thirty-five thousand, because that's how many people are um in our town in those summer months. So um, it's it's a real tough one that I'd like to be able to continue to to work on. And um, I'm very sensitive to those tax increases.
Thank you, Gary. Uh Nina, you're up now for the same question. Increase of roughly fifteen percent in the town budget. Uh, do you support the budget as presented? And if not, what would you reduce or eliminate? And how much would that save?
Okay. I am concerned about the increase. We know that the recent surge in our taxes combined with our future needs is not sustainable as a community. We do have to make changes. And I knew the school bond is part of the reasoning, um and I proudly supported the school. Because I know that schools bring families and they bring employees. Um, but our massive rise in legal fees combined with dramatic cuts in our revenue are compounding our tax dilemma. We all know that climate is changing and something needs to be done. And I agree that the need to act should be a priority, but that action needs to be taken in a fiscally responsible way. Um, doing a project cannot be more important than doing it right. Um, one thing that we don't do, that I wish we did do, would uh return budgets to the departments and ask for standard deductions. It's not something we've done. We don't ask for multiple um, multiple budgets from departments. Like, give us your pie in the sky, give us your um must-haves. And I think something like that would actually be really useful to um navigating the um. Navigating the budget, navigating the whole warrant process. And I think most, most industries and organizations trim excess this way. Um, and our local nonprofits are all amazing, and I think there there is a great opportunity to partner with them on our school project coming up. And every additional dollar that they contribute will be beneficial to our tax burden and warmly, warmly received. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Onto question four, and first up is Nathan. The question is, uh, on the other side of the budget, the revenue side. Uh, several ideas have been advanced, some of them by shifting the burden to tourists. Ranging from lodging taxes to some sort of tourist tax. Which approach do you favor, if any? Nathan.
Uh, we certainly need to continue to figure out ways to generate revenue, but we need to find ways not to. The need for for more revenue is generated by our ex- our expenditures. And until we get our expenditures under control, which I suggest that we certainly can. That that, we just can't keep raiding the piggy bank, if you will. I mean, using the parking meters as an ATM. Increasing the rates and everything else, that's offensive to the visitor as well. It's offensive to the local who won't go downtown because they don't want to pay for parking. It's it's. It it doesn't come without consequences, our raising revenue. You know, our our visitor pays nine percent lodging tax and if we, you know, the only thing I could think of. Uh, out of the box would be a tourism impact fee. If we call it a fee, maybe there's a mechanism which we would be allowed to come up with a percentage that we could charge for that fee. I'm not convinced that until we get, I I need to be more convinced that we can get our spending out of control, under control. Before we move forward with figuring out how many more revenue sources we can come up with. You know, I I I'm going through a building project myself. And I recognize the expense associated with that, but I also recognize that we could increase the fees for building permits. There's that, they may be small items, but every little bit's going to help. I'm probably out of time. I'm putting myself out of time. Thank you.
You have to use all your time. Alright, next is Gary and um same question. What are your ideas about raising additional revenue? Shifting burden to tourists, lodging taxes or a tourist tax? Which do you favor, if any?
I'm uh very excited about taking a new approach at a local options lodging tax. I think that um our visitors uh are certainly able to pay another percent or so. And um that that it's the cost of of uh serving tourists that are really driving a lot of our budget increases. Um, so I would like to take some creative approaches uh with the legislature on that. I'm working with other service communities and coastal communities to see if we can um finally build a. A a coalition that would uh pass a majority um sales tax. I know that the town manager has some uh interesting ideas in that regard. I'm really excited about working with James Smith on that. I think that uh. That the taxpayers are are about at their limit and and so it's it's really incumbent on the next council. To um to do e- everything it can to keep that that tax increase to a minimum and to find alternative sources of revenue. Um, I think that there are other creative approaches that we could take that. Um, I'd like to see the council roll out in the um, in the coming year to um, to. Relieve the burden on uh lower and middle-income property taxpayers. Um, there's a possibility of actually increasing the homestead exemption, which would um, which would shift the. The tax burden from the the middle class to the um highest value properties. So that's another possibility that we could pursue.
Thanks, Gary. Uh, next up is Joey. Ideas for alternative revenue, shifting the burden to tourists, lodging taxes or what have you. Which approach do you favor?
Uh, I I favor lodging tax at this point. We we've been on a few. Uh, a couple of vacations and then a couple of of meetings this uh winter. And and did a bit of traveling and everywhere you go, you pay lodging tax and you pay some type of tourist management fee. Uh, or tourist impact fee. Um, I think the state is in the dark ages. I think the whole state would prosper by having additional fees. But you know, just the snapshot in the town of Bar Harbor, just like Gary said. You know, we're a town of fifty-two-hundred, fifty-three-hundred people and we have to provide the services for thirty-five thousand people. Um, it just doesn't make sense. It used to be that we could get seasonal police force or seasonal fire people or seasonal. You know, workers that work within our community, but you can't do that anymore. These turn into year-round jobs. And which is great, but at the uh cost is all attributed to tourism. So let the tourists pay for this. They they need to pay for this. We need some help. You know, as far as going after, you know, the budget as is, yeah, like I say, we can trim a few things here and there, but at the end of the day. We need dollars. We don't need pennies. We need to advance the ball here. Costs are going to be going up. Uh, they're going to continue to go up as life goes on, as they always do. And we need more people that that can contribute to this whole uh, you know, situation that we have here. But it's not anything new. Lodging tax, tourist taxes, those types of things are happening all over our country. Um, am I going back on vacation to these places that we've been, where we've been charged? Absolutely. We had a great time. Um, people that live in this town. They don't have the convenience of increasing their wages. Like the costs of doing, you know, of of our services and our demands are in this town. So we have to get it from somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next is Nina. Alternative revenue, tourism fees. What do you think?
Great. Uh, I just wanted to point out that we need to remember and appreciate that we already collect millions of dollars from our visitors each year. So we are doing that to some extent. Um, and if we want to supplement our budget further, a local options tax is definitely the best direction for Bar Harbor. And I really delight in the idea that the health of our businesses would be tied to the welfare of our community. We know that a local options tax has been tried, I don't know, maybe eighty times or sixty times. It's a really large number. Um, and each time the efforts have been isolated. Um, and very specific or tied to things like affordable housing or revenue sharing, and so they have been sunk. So the problems that we have with aging infrastructure and lack of financial support from the state. Um, and our tourism management, management issues are not specific only to Bar Harbor. What we haven't done is create an organized effort up and down this coast where we rally the other communities with similar struggles. Around a very basic and business-friendly effort toward creating a local options tax. We have struggled specifically with Hospitality Maine and the Main Chamber, who both have lobbyists. And work against these efforts in the main legislature. These two organizations need to understand that the municipalities and the businesses can actually help each other by opting into this tax. I believe that a low percentage like one percent or no more than two percent will have the greatest likelihood of success. This number will also uh need a not-to-exceed qualifier so that businesses will have the security of knowing that this tax will not rise. Even though others will. Well, I've heard much higher numbers suggested the money, the money is um, one percent is much better than no money. Um, and the larger organizations will work against this if they believe that businesses will lose and not gain from their efforts. So I think reminding the state, the state chamber and Hospitality Maine, that the state taxes lodging. They tax food, gas, marijuana, payroll, alcohol, property, excise and receive support. From the very communities that create the most amount of revenue for them.
Thank you. Michael, you're next. Alternative revenue, taxes on tourists. What do you think?
I I think that it's a lot easier to try and get more money than it is to cut. I I'm with you, Nate. It's it's hard to tell someone you're out of a job or I can't provide the service. But that has to happen as well. I know the question is more about raising revenue, but I don't think it's an either-or thing, right? It is both. And and I'm with you, Joey. It's it's dollars, not cents. But every cent counts and there is some cutting that needs to be done. I I think it's ironic that we've added a couple revenue sources um over the years. One, by our choice, the parking meter revenue, and then one, just because of the industry exploded. It really uh increased the cruise ship revenue. One, we've gotten rid of recently, right? And now we're saying, well, we don't have enough revenue. Well, we did get uh uh rid of that revenue. Um, and now we're looking at more. I I am in favor of a a a local option tax. I am very much in favor of, again, putting some serious guardrails up on that local option tax if we can ever get it passed. Meaning, you know, it it sunsets, maybe not sunsets, but it it's, it can't go higher after ten years for for a minimum of ten years. Because again, there's nothing easier than saying, well, let's just raise the parking meter. Let's just raise the local option tax from one percent to two percent. We're short on our budget here. Let's just go get more money. Because again, it's a lot harder to cut. It's a lot harder to tell someone. Your hours are gone or the services that I provided are gone. Um, no one wants to see that happen. Sometimes it has to. Um, so I'm in favor of that. Other revenue sources, I'm not as much in favor of. I'm not. Um, in favor continually to go back to the bucket of the parking meters. Um, the cruise ships are a whole nother thing. I think there is additional revenue there, depending on how it all flashes out in the future. Whether we, there's a lot there. Um, I am in the yellow. Hopefully that answered some of the question. Thanks.
Thank you. And our uh next respondent is Charles. Same question on alternative revenue and whether to put some of the burden onto the tourists. We don't have any audio, Charles.
There you go. I'm sorry. Um. I'm in agreement with everyone who spoke to this question before. I think the local options tax or taxes or tourist fees, whatever you call it, make a great deal of sense. They're appropriate. A lot of our expenses are due to the fact that we're such a popular destination. But we don't have control over that. What we do have control over is our expenditures. I don't believe we can spend the money until we have it. It's kind of like in my mind saying, there's a lot of water on the moon, so we don't have to worry about what we waste and pollute down here on earth. We'll just get it from the moon. Well. It's still on the moon and we can't get it so easily. So. My, my first thing is the previous question, we must reduce expenditures. Now, if you do ask about additional. Um, sources of revenue. Um, the one that comes to mind is you, everybody knows I've been quite vocal about the cruise ship issue. Um, this month alone, the town council has foregone a million dollars of. Fines that are built into the recently citizen-passed ordinance. And for almost fifteen years, we have given away so much tendering revenue. That the town used to do and used to accept, we've given away so much in aggregate that we could have paid for. Either of our major bonds, the infrastructure or the school. So we're reaping what we sow, and I think, I hope to have fewer cru- cruise ships in the future, but let's take some of that back. Um, the fees that are charged to the passengers can only be used for the passengers, so that's not general income. But were we to, again, receive a smaller number of tenders at our facilities, we would earn some income that I believe we can use generally. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, now we're up to the last question before the closing statements. And Charles, you're up first on this question. You guys listen up. I'm going to read this. It's kind of a long question and I don't want to repeat it every time. I'd rather hear you guys speak. So the question is, the residents of Bar Harbor are very divided now across a range of issues. How would you approach governing and problem solving? Do you see your role as a counselor as representing those who share your views? Or do you see your role as representing a broader constituency? Charles, you're first.
It's an excellent question. It's like. It's an excellent question. It's like my second favorite on the list. So I'm going to refer to my, my knowledge and years of service on corporate boards. The same question is asked of corporate board members. Does each director represent the views of the constituency that nominated or installed him or her? Or does each director represent and work for all shareholders, stakeholders in the corporation? And the latter is absolutely true. Every director, every town counselor is responsible for the welfare and the well-being of the entire entity and all of its stakeholders. Having said that, we all have different opinions and we will believe that the interests of the aggregate are best served by taking one position or another, and that's legitimate. But the clear answer to this question is every town counselor works for the entire town. I believe that's unarguable.
Thank you so much. Gary, you're next.
Thanks. Um, one of the things that I've enjoyed most about being on the town council is having the opportunity to talk with our citizens about the issues that concern them. And, um, I, uh, I'm especially interested in sitting down with people and, and, and really having, um, in-depth conversations about uh, what's happening in this town. And I, I had the opportunity to have several meetings with constituents in their homes, with small groups of people um, this winter, people that were concerned about what was happening with the cruise ship lawsuits, people that were concerned about, about the tax increases. Um, people that were concerned about the quality of life. And, um, I, I think that, that the role of a counselor is to listen hard and with an open mind. And, um, and then to bring that back to the council and have an open mind there as well. Um, I always, uh, believe that having seven of us on the council is great because, um, you get seven different perspectives, people from all different points of view. And sometimes I go into those meetings with a certain, uh, uh, predilection toward, toward an issue and then come out changing my mind, having heard what people have to say. I think that's what we have to do as a town is to listen to each other better and to seek compromises. I think that, that the role of, of a town counselor is to, um, have his or her ear to the ground and, um, and, and be open to what, um, what people are saying. And, and that's what I've tried to do. I think I've been accessible that way. And I hope to continue to bring that to all the problem solving that needs to be done in the coming three years.
Thanks, Gary. Nathan, you're next.
Thank you. We, we are divided on a various range of issues, but yet I think we're, we're somewhat united in the fact that we do recognize what the problems are. But we need to express a willingness to come up with a middle ground approach to, you know, the, the problem solving in and of itself. I, I feel as a counselor, that represents my constituency is, is the stockholder, the resident taxpayer. And that's who, I mean, you have to listen to all sides and believe in, you know, and, and going in and around the community and talking to people. It's, it's, the responses are not really very kind towards the way the town's being run. Uh, I don't know, it, it's, there is an explanation associated with it. And if you, and if you're upset with the budget people, show up at town meeting. That's where it happens. Our town meeting, you know, it, it, it's where it all happens. It is difficult to sit next to a neighbor when they, when we go to vote on the budget and, and not raise your hand in favor of something because I, I think it's an uncomfortable position for people to be in when a budget's being presented. And it is absolutely nothing to do with the quality of employee we have. It's the quality of our taxpayer is what I'm mostly concerned about. And we need to be more attentive to the needs of all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael.
Uh, I'll take the second part of the question first, Jill, um, because it's easy. Uh, of course, you know, we, we don't have districts in Bar Harbor. I'm not representing the South Side or, uh, or Barbary Lane. I'm, I'm representing the whole town. So the whole town is voting for the councils, counselors, and, and that's who you're representing. Certainly, I think people have, um, parts of the town or constituencies that they're closer with or have better communication with or more frequent communication with. But, um, you know, as Gary said, that the effort needs to be to get out and talk to the other constituencies that you don't talk to and to hear their voices as well. And, and like Nate says, make sure they're getting their voice out. Make sure they're getting to town meeting. Um, the more complicated part of the question i- is, um, it's not really that complicated, but I, I don't believe that we are as divided as, as this question suggests we are. I, I think that, um, I think a lot of times vocal minorities make us seem like we're more divided than we are and make it seem like there are more, more, that there's more contention than there is around some issues. Certainly, there's some big issues and there's a lot of different opinions, but I think we're all really after the same thing, the best community that we can possibly live in, right? Uh, there's some differing opinions about what that best community means, but, um, and the way that I would govern or, or represent people or be a counselor is the same way that I've done in my businesses and on boards is really work towards a consensus, really work towards, again, those complex, those complex issues that really need to be well thought out, deeply thought out, discussed and, and balanced. Uh, and I, I, I've been successful at that and I, I think I would be, um, hopefully moderately successful at it on the council. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Nina.
Hi, okay. So I think we have disagreements on many issues, but I think that Bar Harbor as a community is way more in alignment than we ever give ourselves credit for. Anyway, so I am a mother of three and I only have two hands, which means that you always have to prioritize. Um, I love prioritization. I love collaboration. And I think the way I would approach this is to look first to our core, like what are the primary strengths of Bar Harbor? And I see our natural beauty, our economy and our schools as being at the very core of our community. So how can we tie the success of our schools and our, and our natural beauty and our economy together? And the comfort of our residents? Um, how can we tie our green initiatives to our business success? I feel strongly that we can't injure one in favor of the other. And I think that we've done that, um, for way too long. And I don't believe residents are any happier or feel that we have changed anything significantly. We've gutted some families who make money on vacation rentals and cruise ships. And we still have the same amount of vehicle traffic. And I think this is because we haven't thought big enough about how to organize Bar Harbor in the way we want it to be for our future. We have been thinking only about what we don't want it to be. And I think those are two very different perspectives. I think I understand and will represent Bar Harbor residents who want to be on the same team and who are interested in converging here in the middle ground. The place where we all love our park, we love our schools, we love basketball, we love ice cream, and we want to take care of our town and our future. I think that's who I represent.
Thank you. Joe.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, the biggest thing that you have to do as a counselor is you gotta listen. And you listen to your constituency, you listen to people that are on the other side, and you credit, try to come up with solutions that work for the whole. Um, I've gone into many meetings where I've had my mind set up on a certain vote or a certain direction on our town. And, you know, other counselors have convinced me to change my opinion as other, uh, citizens of the town have too. Um, but I think we all try to bring the best to the table when we're making these decisions. I think that it's one of those things where this is a town with many, many complex issues. I don't think there's any one right answer for any of the issues that we have. But I think on a whole, it really is important to listen to the people. When you hear a common theme, uh, you, you have to raise these in the appropriate times. Um, but I think being flexible, being honest, uh, not having, uh, self-interest in any of these things, you have to do what's best for the whole. And sometimes it's a decision that a lot of people don't like, but it's sometimes it is the decision that needs to be made. And, uh, they're tough. I mean, it's tough sitting up there and, and when these issues are being fired at you and, and, you know, you, you really want to do the right thing. But it, it is, it's, it's listening and, uh, trying to advance the ball. We, we really need to, to move things along so we can, we can progress as a, as a community.
Thank you, Joey. And we are, believe it or not, at closing statements. And so each of you has two minutes to make your, um, last pitch for tonight to the voters of Bar Harbor. And Nina will be first on this one.
Alrighty. Alright, so my final statement. Let's organize our efforts based on our commitment to our youth, to our schools, to our natural beauty that defines Bar Harbor. If we view the current challenges as opportunities, we can address our primary issue with tur- tourism, car traffic. As Ellsworth absorbs more residents and MDI remains a key revenue source for the state, it's crucial that we reduce the number of employees commuting from off the island. This calls for improved transportation strategies like teaching visitors to avoid peak travel times, enhancing our bus system, creating centralized parking. Our housing focus should shift toward multifamily housing in areas with existing infrastructure to welcome younger residents and workers. This will involve modifying zoning laws to permit smaller lots and taller buildings, fostering a community where living and working locally is feasible for younger people. Moreover, working from a strong foundation, that core of quality of life and economic opportunity is in such, is essential. We must move away from blaming each sector for the discomforts of the other and instead find ways to tie business success to the pride and comfort of our residents. This includes strategic partnerships with local nonprofits and sensible financial, financial decisions concerning our town budget and potential tax strategies such as our local option tax. So if elected, I'm committed to representing all residents of Bar Harbor focusing on unity and shared values by strengthening our core, our schools, our environment and our community spirit. And we can ensure that Bar Harbor thrives as a beautiful, sustainable and harmonious place to live and visit.
Thank you very much, Nina. Michael, you're next.
Man, I was really hoping I wasn't next because that's off the follow-up, Nina. I was hoping I was gonna be last, so everybody forgot how good that was. I, what she said, um, I think that I'd be good at the job. I think that I've been good at this job in the past in different aspects and, and on various boards. Um, and in my businesses, you know, we're really, we're really decision makers a- as a whole. I'm not a, a, a solo operator at the businesses that we run. We really take in input. We make the decision based on what seems to be best for the majority of guests of our employees. Uh, on the board of the college, of course, a, a big organization. Um, I think I've been effective at, at balancing sometimes some really contentious views, um, and differing views and trying to come up with a solution that, that makes sense, both budgetary, uh, and, um, programmatically and, and, uh, and for the health and, and welfare of the whole college community, which of course is different than, than an entire town, but, um, not that different. So that's really my pitch. I think I'm, I'm ready to help. I'm, I'm excited. I think I could help. Um, but there's some great competition here and some great, uh, I think we're really in, in good shape. I, as I said in the beginning, I see I'm in yellow, but I'm not running because I think the council or, or we as an organization or community are doing a horrible job at making decisions. Um, I think we're doing okay. We can always do better. Um, I'm running because I think I'd like to be one of the people that's trying to help, help it, uh, be better. Thanks.
Thank you. Charles.
Uh, somehow I keep being muted, not by my action, so apologize. Um, really happy and honored to be here in this crowd of really good people, good neighbors and fellow citizens. I want to say three things. One is, I view a town in many situations as an ecology, at the center of which are our citizens. They live here and they vote here. Around them, there's another ring of residents who happen to vote somewhere else. They don't get to vote here, but they pay property taxes here. Then we have the businesses. Now, some of those businesses are owned by people who live here and are citizens or residents. Some of them are owned by people who live elsewhere, and this is purely an economic opportunity for them. And then we have our most distant circle, our visitors, our friends and, and guests. Um, they don't get to vote in a political sense. They only get to vote with their feet. They either come here or not, but they're stakeholders and we need them. They rely on us. We rely on them. So I think it's important to recognize the specific roles and I place voting citizens at the center. Second thing I want to say is this is a, I think a typical political conversation. There's a lot of happy talk, wish lists, gotta do this, need to do that, wants, vague fantasies, et cetera. That's all fine. And you can listen to all that stuff. Several, um, people have spoken about listening. But the real role of a town counselor is to act and decide. And that leads to be, to my third point. I don't think the good intentions and the best efforts have so far led to acceptable results. I don't think our town is okay. And so I am running not from any personal interest or um, benefit to me. I'm running to offer an alternative if the citizens, the voting citizens want to take a different path. I want to participate in that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Joey.
Um, I'm running because, uh, like I say, I think there's some unfinished business, but I think a couple of the big things is finding balance in our community, um, which we talked about earlier. Um, um, I, I, I really feel like it, it is about the citizen of our town and their feelings and their wants. Um, I think we've prioritized tourism over all of this, even though tourism is a big contributor to our economy or the biggest contributor to our economy. Um, we still can't forget about people that are not involved with that. We need to, uh, make sure that they're able to stay in their homes. Um, they're able to be comfortable in their communities. I think it's just one of those things that looking forward, I really would like to put my efforts into these alternative revenues into putting together a, a good conversation for the state. I don't think the state really realizes what the, the, the local person is going through to be able to stay in this community now. And I know it's not just us. And I know it's something that, uh, we need to prioritize going forward. We can have things in our budget. We can have a big budget as long as we've got the funding for it. But we can't keep asking the same five thousand people to be the only ones that contribute to this. And, and, uh, you know, these are important things. I just really want people to enjoy their community again and not feel so stressed about being able to stay here. So that's, that's my priority.
Thank you. Nathan, you're next.
Sustainability is the crux of everything we're talking about and, and that at the pace we're going in, I, you know, we need to establish a prioritization schedule on our infrastructural needs that have gone ignored for years. And then that we, we, we need to avoid the sticker shock associated with why do we need this? And then it just creates a whole lot of discussion. There are several areas in the town that need to be addressed. And the way this needs to be done is like the council did in two thousand twelve. They took a prior, they, they took the public safety building study that was done and it was put on a shelf for good reason. Because the cost and the understanding that I had then was the fact that the council was going to establish a prioritization schedule on all of our infrastructural needs and try to go forward with a plan. I have not seen that happen and it's twelve plus years ago now. I think it's very important that we get our costs under control. I think we need to listen. We have the cross-section of the community. We have all different ideas and ideals to how this needs to work, but in fact, it does work. It just doesn't work as well as some would like to have it. And we need to find the middle ground to make it work. Recognizing that we live in one of the most spectacular places on the planet, and this is my home, and I enjoy all of our neighbors and, and interacting with all the town, the townspeople that I do have a chance to speak with. Third second. Thirty seconds. I, I just, I just summarized that, I just summarized it and I'm. I would appreciate the support that I received last year and those who, that were skeptical about my campaign. I'm consistent. I'm aware, I have the experience and I've worked for and with many counselors that give me that experience. And I would appreciate your support and thank you very much for having this. Thank you, Jill, and thank you to the Women's League and good luck to all the rest of the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Gary.
My wife and I settled in Bar Harbor forty-two years ago. We built our own passive solar super insulated home on the edge of town. You have may, might have seen me commuting on my bike through every season and all weather. It keeps me healthy and avoids burning fossil fuel. Our daughter has attended kindergarten through high school here. I served on the Conservation Commission for twelve years. Co-founded a climate to thrive and worked hard to bring the first solar arrays to towns and schools in Versant Territory. I strive to strengthen our community through my business, which employs six people, helping nonprofit organization. Our work is focused on raising money to build community. We helped raise the money to build the YMCA in nineteen ninety-six and the fourteen million dollar Joseph Library expansion now underway. And we've managed campaigns for dozens of organizations on MDI and many more across Maine over the last twenty-five years. Fifteen years ago, my wife Glenn had started Bar Harbor Farm to grow high quality organic vegetables for our friends and neighbors. Now with our partners and half a dozen employees, we feed a hundred fifty families, supply local restaurants and two food pantries. Using low till methods that sequester carbon while building soil fertility. I, I love Bar Harbor. I love this community, which has given me and my family so much. Working for you on the town council is one of the most satisfying ways I've found to give a little bit back. I'll appreciate your support at the polls on June eleventh.
Thank you, Gary. And my deepest thanks. It's so hard to get six people together on one evening and we did it. You were all quick to respond in favor. I very much appreciated hearing your sincere and thoughtful responses to some really challenging questions. Thanks to Cece and Sage from the high school for joining us tonight, to the League of Women Voters. Particularly Ann Luther, our steady guardian, and to Jen for our behind the scenes tech support. And to the Mantisir Islander and editor Faith Dambros, who was also a partner in putting this event together. And good night.
Hey, thank you, Jill. We'll post a YouTube link to this entire, entire conversation at the League's website. That's LWVME.org. Look on the events page, find this event and we'll post the YouTube link there if you want to share it with your friends and supporters. Good night. Thanks, everybody.